Senator VanderWaal?
No, Kim emailed the four of us, you and I.
I can't get an email.
I got an email from him this afternoon saying, "I'm sorry, an apology if you could not be here tonight because he's sick."
Welcome, congratulations to you.
Yeah, appreciate it.
I included you all. I emailed them back because.
Could we not do executive session then?
Well, I would like. An attorney for executive session.
But I think he's recording.
Well, someone else would have to record it.
Yeah, like a voicemail?
Yeah.
That.
Yeah, my last. So has the noise gone away now, Jen?
It's still pretty loud. Um, it's okay if I don't have my headphones in, it's not as um, it just, it sounds like someone's just kind of scratching on like a, I don't know, very tinny sheet of metal very loudly.
She's hearing.
Sam, Sam's doing it.
Sam, cut it out, Sam.
Let's give another minute.
Too softly.
Okay, okay.
At this.
Must be the best.
Yeah, I think it's.
Okay.
Are you hearing it?
We're in the near direction.
Yeah, yeah.
Nothing with the library.
It's gotta be a speaker. Sorry about that.
A leak in May. So.
Okay, let's get started.
What?
Okay.
The echo canceling, right?
Yeah.
Usually.
Okay. Calling meeting to order. We have a full house, so thank you all for coming. Um, do we have anybody here for public comment? Anybody online? Um, our first order of business is to consider the minutes of March nineteenth. Did anyone have any changes to the minute? Somebody want to make a motion to approve the minute? Sylvia, move approval of the minute. All second. All those in favor? Aye. Aye, pass it to you now in a straight. Um, treasurer's report, Sylvia.
Well, I had intended to wear my pin stripe suit and a tie for my last. Treasure report. I think there's a monocle somewhere in our house. But it was a busy morning. So this is uh, the treasure report uh, for this month. The top page is probably the best um, outline of the issues we've been looking at and following. So property tax disbursement revenue for year to date through March is eight point seven million. Um, on hand balance, including the CD account as of today, so this was, this report was generated today, just so you know. Uh, a robust twenty-one point nine. I like to add the word robust. Um, let's see here. So we have the CD account from JP Morgan matured at the end of March and the interest on that earned on that was a hundred and eleven thousand dollars. Um, on April second, another fifteen million was transferred to the CD account as we discussed at the last meeting. Um, accumulated interest earned from the checking account year to date is sixty-two point four K. Um, operating expenses for January and February were one point six million and capital was two hundred and eighty-four K. Um, our, excuse me, our expenses for January and February totaled thirty-four point seven K. Um, they are about to transition fully to stage intact and that will be nice because then they'll be able to generate uh, like different reports or more specific reports. Um, they won't have to be done in the way that Adriana has had to put them together for us, so uh, that'll be good for you, Kara. And um, so, and then she also notes the cafe except cash and credit card payments. So we'll probably start seeing them monthly expense report for that starting in May. Um, and then we have a new accounting specialist. Um, is that Esther Nakupukun? I want to mispronounce her name. So um, that's exciting because that's going to take a little bit of the work off of Adriana's hands. Um, so the second page is the profit and loss. Um, and that's pretty, pretty straightforward. We didn't really, um, I didn't really, um, I just wanted to share that with you and then the last. I think it's really kind of exciting, but.
Well, thank you all. Okay, so our next order of business is the election of officers and designation. With reps.
Wait, because I just wanted to ask about the attorney and attorney fees and legal services. I was just wondering about whether we will see a reduction in some of the legal services just given some of the sort of in-house elements of some of these things and sort of our own staffing and.
We will. So I think the time that he is spending is going to go down substantially for the legal consultants, but that's also same uh, it's true for, we had brought in the project managing consultant, um, Margot, you guys met the firm, I can't remember the name right now. So we have parted ways with them as well, and then we are parting ways at the end of this month with the finance consultants. That we had, now that we have Sage Intact ready to go, I think we can manage it better. So those fees will go down. Uh, legal, you continue to retain Senator VanderWaal, so they will continue to be legal consultants. I can't predict like how, if something's going to come up and their costs may go up and like routine kind of stuff, definitely a decrease.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, I was just thinking of that. It's just for the time. Thank you.
Okay, so election of officers and designation of committees and um, BLF reps. Thank you everyone for sending in your druthers um, ahead of time. That's very helpful. We actually have a slate. So I'd recommend that we just keep it simple and act on the slate. I'm sorry?
Did you use?
I think she's on.
She's on my computer. I can see her. Oh, okay.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so the computer that we see is not working, so Jennifer is a fallback on her own computer.
So we're recording. Jen, could you say something and I'll see if this microphone also works?
I'm here and I can hear everybody right now. Can you hear me? No? Can you hear me? Um, you're on mute now.
Right.
Does he hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Will it work just to have you text or chat and then I'll read it out?
Okay.
I mean, that's. She could also just call one of us.
Or she could, yeah, call the, she just want to, do you have a charger cable, Andy, that I can borrow and then she could just call my cell phone?
Oh, I have actually a.
What, this guy?
Yeah, a little bit.
Have you called their cell phone?
Oh, cool.
Just gonna MacGyver this meeting.
Okay, all right. Tell her to call my cell phone now.
I had to turn it on. There's a little button. Thanks, yeah.
There we go. Thank you. I'll just call her.
She had to get her phone.
Oh, okay.
Technology's so nice when it works.
Well, there's now multiple backups, I guess, so. Patient. That's fine.
It's fine.
She's back in the picture.
All right, I'll just. Get that call.
So she's gonna like be on that and then also this?
She can't find her phone. Okay.
I'll call her, see if it rang.
I'm just calling to see if it rang.
Okay.
Uh huh.
Maybe iMessage?
That's what she was doing.
Yeah. No? Kids have it.
Gambling.
She says, "I'm fine with Jen speaking for me, I'm sorry."
Okay.
The only millennial on earth with no phone. I will ask my kids to look for it. We got you, Jen. No worries.
Okay, well, thank you everybody for um, identifying in advanced positions you were interested in serving in. Um, I wrote them all down up there on the whiteboard. Um, Doug President, Benita Vice President, Kara Treasurer, Budget and Finance, Kara and Sam, Governance Sylvia and Benita, and our BLF reps Sylvia, and for the moment Doug. And then I believe Andy, who's already on the foundation board, will step into that role. You guys will take action on that in May. So does anybody want to speak to any of these?
So if nobody understands, as it relates to the foundation reps, how does that, I mean, I understand the two that are sitting, but is that, was that a conversation that you all had to just continue in those roles?
Well, so I asked them if, so since Andy is not technically a trustee yet. Um, so I would either have to, if, I would like to step out since I'm going to be the president and um, Sylvia expressed an interest to stay on the foundation and Andy expressed an interest to stay on the foundation. And so I said, "Well, I can, if nobody objects, um, I can uh, stay on for a month until Andy becomes sworn in and then, um, and then, uh, and then we can put him on the foundation and I could come off." Um, but if anybody else, I guess, if anybody else has, this is for discussion, you know, interest in joining the foundation apart from those folks, Andy's been doing, he did, been doing a lot of stuff on there with just by laws and.
Share the governance.
So.
Committee, so.
Yeah.
Kind of work over.
So anyway, so that was what um, we discussed, I discussed with Sylvia and, and Andy. So.
And I think we were kind of going off of emails that everyone sent out. I don't remember anyone else saying anything about.
No. No one else identified interest. Yeah. Yeah, the only place where there were two people suggesting maybe they wanted the same slot was governance, where Benita and Sam both expressed an interest and Sam decided to do budget and finance, so that made it easy.
I, I missed that either too. Okay.
So does someone want to make a motion to approve the slate?
And that's the slate?
That's the slate.
Okay.
It's not on slate, but it's.
So, so I guess we just say Doug will, you know, I just, we wouldn't put Andy on there, you know, until, since he's not a foundation, anyway. We need to do the motion. So I'll make a motion to approve the slate.
Your second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor? Is that Jen in favor too? Okay?
That's the, that's the. If her is keeping notes for minutes, is going to have a real challenge.
I think we'll have to figure out getting her signature on everything because right now I'm listed on like the bank account. Well, that one we get. Shifted, yeah.
It was really easy last time.
For both of.
Yeah.
They have to start yesterday.
Yeah, for both.
Yeah, we.
I should have mentioned that last time, I didn't.
No, that's fine. We'll, we'll ask Adriana to request a form.
Okay, good.
It'll, we'll be.
I mean.
Headline in six months.
Okay.
Okay, so you just can't go in.
Well, it's an honor to uh, to, to lead this board and I'm looking forward to working with all of you and David and staff. And uh, it's not that I, you're supposed to give a speech here, but give me a little. And uh, and thank you Johnny for your year of service and our other officers Sylvia and Benita. And um, although Benita's staying on here uh, as vice president, but uh, yeah, it's a real honor and I feel very humbled because uh, I told somebody today that you forgot more about this library than I know, so. Like, I'm like uh, I'm a little nervous about that, but with all of us working together, we'll be fine, so. Um, anyway, okay, so we did that, we approved the slates. So governance, uh.
Library policies.
Oh, library policy, sorry. See, I already messed up. Financial policy packet.
Yep.
So now the straying wheels on.
Yeah.
I'm so sorry, it's on the agenda. I just want to confirm, are we, oh, sorry, it is on the agenda, but I was looked stray by my neighbor. It's not, all right, just a yarn. Here you are. Did we get public comment from our public comment person here?
Not yet. Our only person. Uh, so, sorry Sylvia, what were you saying? Like, okay, okay, I was confused by that. All right, library policies, financial policies. Packet.
So as we discussed last meeting, that was small. The majority of what's in your packet tonight is mostly procedures. There's one policy and procedure. And then the revised grant purchasing policies back in the packet because um, after I reworked and moved the procedures from the policy and then answered some questions, I felt like it needed a little more clarification than where we landed at the meeting, so I wanted to get it in front of you again. And so you could just review that, those changes and decide whether or not you can approve it tonight or you can wait till the thirtieth when I bring all just the policies back to you for a final approval. So I think like last time, we could just go through one by one.
Yeah, let's do that. Yeah. So we begin with the Boulder Public Library District gift card procedure. Anyone have it? Go ahead.
Sorry, I have two things. Um, so in uh, two A, the beginning processing requirements. I don't know if we need to clarify that employees wishing to use district funds to purchase gift cards. Um, but those gift cards are for the community members or employees, right? They're not for, I, I don't know if we need to maybe express that, that, because the way that it's written is employees wishing to use district funds to purchase gift cards must complete. But it's not the employee who's going to necessarily use the gift card. Does that make sense?
So you're saying maybe put something like to purchase gift cards for community members or employees must complete?
Yeah, because it just didn't seem clear to me when I read it that, I mean, it's, it's not for themselves, it's for others.
Could we just, could we just say like to purchase the aforementioned gift cards? Because it's like.
Could do that too.
Find them.
Yeah, it just, just even, it didn't come out, just come out there. And then my second thing.
Done a lot of work. I don't know, the gift cards described above.
And then my second thing is the number three about unused gift cards.
Yes.
So it talks about how they have to apply for a refund for undistributed cards or surrender cards. And then B is about unused gift cards that are held. Um, is there like a timeframe when that has to happen? How long does that normally, like?
I don't know, we don't have a timeframe.
Okay, so.
This is brand new, so.
Okay.
There wasn't a policy about this particular thing.
Right.
With the city, at least I didn't know about it. So this one was adapted from Garfield timing. Um, we can put a timeline on it.
I mean, do you anticipate this is going to get like used right away? I mean, like how often would this be referred to?
Uh, it probably will get used right away.
Okay, yeah, I just, I was just trying to think, it's, it's kind of open-ended and I didn't know of like, we wanted to say like, you know, after a year, after six months.
Uh, we could, we could totally put a date on it.
Is it, it would buy unused, does that mean that like, because it looks like we would be borrowing them to give to people? So is the idea that they'd be purchased but then never gifted?
Yeah.
Is that what you mean by unused?
Yes.
So yeah, maybe they haven't been gifted to anyone within a year? I just, most gift cards don't expire very.
Right.
So it's like the person who gets it doesn't use it, it won't, you know?
Right.
But I guess if we don't ever actually give it to anyone.
A year seems like, okay, yeah, okay. Right.
We also say something like, um, they could, I mean, if they're not used for a year, they could be transferred to another program or something, you know?
Yep.
Does that make sense to?
Yeah, I was thinking about that too.
You buy twenty and you only have ten people show up and you keep them and then for the next focus group.
Shorter time. Six months.
Yeah.
So then they could be held by the finance manager, she could issue it to somebody else who's looking for it. Jen, do you know in um, the city allowed city funds to be used to purchase gift cards? Yes, it did.
Yeah.
It did. Okay, uh, we had to fill out a form um, that was issued to HR and if it was given to an employee, they were taxed for it.
That, that's, that's what happened in my company too.
Yeah, and if we issue the community members, it's usually for their participation in like a, both this group or some kind of information gathering.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Prices occasionally.
Occasionally for prices. Okay.
Because I just know like with some governmental entities that I've worked with, they've often asked me representing the nonprofit organization, I was to do the gift card thing because their city policies allow them to receive dollars. To do that, that's why I just wanted to ask. Um, because sometimes public don't.
In my own opinion and Adriana's, we would like to limit the use of gift cards as much as possible because we feel like it's going to be a uh, something that the auditor looks carefully at. And so um, especially when it comes to giving employees um, gifts or bonuses, we'd like to do that through payroll rather than gift cards. That's why there's a low value to um, I think the other policy had new dollars and.
Good.
And do we restrict how the gift cards can be used now that at grocery stores you can buy wine and beer and all that, you know, things like that? No?
I'm not, I'm not even, I'm sorry. You can go look at me for that, but you know.
I, I don't remember the last time we've done it for staff. So the foundation used to always give good cards to staff. We did for a time here, the foundation had set up a fund which allowed managers, the managers have requested to take their staff to coffee. And so it became more convenient to just give the staff a gift certificate to get a copy for themselves. Uh, and so that's kind of how it was being used, but I, I don't remember the last time we've done that.
For staff, I don't remember either.
Yeah, it's been a while.
Is there a way with the cafe that will you guys issue, like at my company, we have a cafeteria and they'll, you know, issue people a credit to the cafe or that kind of stuff? Are you thinking about anything like that?
Yeah, we do have a program so new staff get a certificate in their pitch that gives them free coffee at the cafe. And we were recently uh, thinking of a way to acknowledge volunteers. I can't, I, I, I punted them to HR because HR had figured out a way to print out a thing and we're tracking it, but we're not, you know, it's not a cash value.
Yeah, right.
You get a free coffee.
Okay.
It's kind of expensive. And if you choose a drip coffee, it's different than a sixteen hundred calorie, you know, caramel frappuccino with goat milk and.
All right.
Made by the director.
It's kind of that meditation, yes.
Yeah. Okay, I just, yeah. That probably wouldn't be governed by this po, if we gave those types of rewards to employees, wouldn't be governed by this policy.
No, we don't. We're not actually buying anything in the cafe.
Yeah.
Supply them. The supplies, but.
Yeah, that's how it, it doesn't, they don't track it like that in the company meeting. Okay. Other comments? About the gift card?
I don't know how far to go on this, but it is just in my thinking and just thinking about other values aligned with this and you know, the district and the taxpayers and all of that, but I just remember like serving on a, on an arts commission panel and getting a gift card to um, you know, the mall vendors and it's a gift card to to the mall, right? Pearl Street Mall and so you can, you can use it there, right? As opposed to like an Amazon gift card. Right, you know, so it's, you know, keeping it localized and keeping it in the tax district where we are, you know, and sort of valuing that piece of it of where we are. You know, it could be something to value of the district, right? So I mean, you could restrict it in that way in the sense that is keeping it here in the line.
Yeah, downtown Boulder used to do that program and we could, I could inquire to see if they still have, we could see if that's an option. People, I don't know if they still do it. That's what we used to give to staff, like that when the foundation was getting gift cards. We were doing, you know, down, that downtown Boulder.
Yeah.
Whatever the group's called. So it had to be the downtown Boulder Association and that's where they could redeem the coupon. We've also done, yeah, Boulder Book Store gift certificates for people for.
Yeah.
Either prizes or like in, a speaker in the theater from the University of Country Free, we may give them a, a gift certificate to Boulder Book Store or something like that.
Would it be, would it be possible to have the policy to say to a local company within the district rather than restricting it to the downtown?
Yeah, we could encourage that.
We could. I don't know that we could.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd say.
Do purchase like a grocery getting cards for a lot of bonus groups, like Target or.
Yes.
That's okay.
Yeah. I mean, I think that aligns with values and funders. Yeah.
All right, we'll move on to the next one. So I, I guess we won't approve this. You'll make some comments and we'll.
The procedure? No, you won't see it again. I'll just.
Okay, oh, okay, the procedure, okay.
Yeah, and since there's no policy part of it, you won't see it.
Okay, I'm now understanding the difference between a policy and a procedure.
Yeah.
Okay.
You missed last meeting when we talked about.
Yeah, I, I should have reviewed the video.
So Jen says she has two comments about the grant procedure policy when we get there.
All right, let's tell her where.
She can hear us, right? Yeah, she can.
Yeah, we are at that procedure now.
All right, so Jen says Roman numeral three of the grant procedure, page eleven of the packet. Good. The multi-year cost benefit analysis requirement seems kind of intense. Question mark. What if the grant is only for one year, for example? Perhaps the language could be more general. Applicant must provide an analysis of the cost benefits to the library for the term of the grant.
So won't it depend on where the grant is received from too? Like won't they want like sort of records or information depending on the grant?
I mean, so it makes sense to revise it to say that they would provide a cost benefit analysis for the applicant acceptance in line with the requirements of the particular grant? Something like that, so it covers both of those things?
Does the leadership team have a preference? Well, it's often times the, the cost benefit analysis takes into account the reporting. So that is a lot of times the reason why we may not apply for grant. This is if the reporting is um, or requires us to track the ages of teenagers attending a program. We just won't do, right? Like, we're not going to apply to that programs, we're not. But yeah, so it does factor in uh, to whether or not we would choose to apply, because that's really what we're talking about in number three is, are we going to apply for the grant? And I, so I think I, I, I'm happy with the term, you know, uh, the cost benefit analysis. Can you turn to the grant? Sounds fine.
The other comment she says is also the following clause is missing the word when. And I believe it's the second paragraph, this is my, to cover the gap between cash being expended and when reimbursement is received by the.
And I have a comment on the next paragraph, there's an executive that slipped through by library director.
Saw that, but I didn't know if it was wrong or not.
We we had a whole bunch of it last time.
Uh I do others. Um so um someone just said the phrase leadership team, is that identified or described earlier in the, like in the whole? Policy? Do we say who that is, cause like we referenced it in number A. And then number B, we say department manager, finance manager and the library director. And then later we referenced the leadership team, so I was just curious, is the leadership team? Department manager, finance manager, library director, or is it some other?
It's them and more people, so yes, we can find it.
Just one place, I think.
Yes.
Yeah, maybe one first mentioned. Um and then my next question is on the second page, page eleven. It's in reporting. And it's the very, very last paragraph on that page. It talks about um the final report. Was it being presented including a budget and it says. And the results of the outcome measures to the team and if required to the board of trustees, and I guess I was just curious. Um how would it be determined if it was required to be presented to the board?
Some grants stipulate. Right, uh some grants, well, I mean, so maybe. I mean, we have seen grants where it requires the chair of the board trustees to assign. As a co-signer of the grant, so in that case, probably the reporting would require you guys also to sign off on.
And and maybe that David wants you to know about it too, so he might require another person to make the presentation.
Is this primarily for? Applying, I mean, for all grants, but. Will we have this procedure also for the foundation, when we apply to the grants to the foundation or?
Uh well, whether it applies to the foundation, I don't know, that's what we were thinking here, this is more or less.
But other grants.
First, you know, there are a lot of grants that are out there, state and federal grants for some, like those are the ones that are bad, most heinous. Reporting structures typically, federal grants, like we typically do not apply, but there are occasions where we do, uh so we have currently here. We have an ILS grant in conjunction with with the museum at Carnegie Library, which is a three year project. So we do occasionally apply for them when we see the benefit, but not always, because sometimes it's a reporting section.
Okay, I just, I I think I'm just mixing up my meetings because of the foundation, I think we were talking about. Realigning. I'm addressing Chris here, so um the uh. Grant giving procedure.
That's different than this.
Okay.
So that's.
Sorry.
That's a coordination between the library foundation and the library itself.
Okay.
Money changes hands from the foundation to the library.
Okay.
So that's different than. Furthermore, David and I are always in communication. Whenever a grant opportunity comes up that the foundation might apply for. And um in. You know, be before we go forward anything, it's David and his leadership team weighing in. Doing our own cost benefit, we're we're even having periodic meetings to say, okay, what what looks? Like it might be on the horizon as an opportunity. And so we have a run.
I I just mixing up the two discussions, that's all, yeah.
We are updating that process as well, the foundation is. Updating that process that we have for the uh applying for grants to the foundation. That's not finalized yet, but we're we're in.
But the library district could be pursuing grants from other foundations outside of.
Yeah, we do, that's what this is talking about, this is pursuing other grants, um. Not 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 foundation, that's, these are not the foundation.
Yes, okay. Following what you're saying.
Anyone else have any more comments on the grant procedure? Alright, so we'll move to the um travel and business meal policy and procedure.
I have a couple of comments on this one, um the first one is that I think this should also apply to the trustees. We saw several other libraries where they just had one policy that was the same for trustees and employees. And in this case, I think in those places where. It references um the supervisor's approval, I think from the library director would be who the trustees would. Submit their request to. Um that saves the trustees having to have a separate policy for travel, which. We didn't see a lot of, I don't think Sylvia, we just, I think most of them just need one policy for everyone. And then my other comment on this one, no, I'm sorry, that was the only one on this one, I think, yep.
So. Should the title just be? I'll say. For. District travel, business meal policy.
Title's fine.
The title's fine, okay.
They just need to reword where it says employees.
Employees and trustees, yeah.
You know, and maybe just upfront, say this applies to both trustees and employees and.
In the policy.
Yeah, and if you could find another word for employees that encompasses both, otherwise. Make it clear that trustees are considered as the same for the purposes of this policy.
Is. I'm not like. A lusher or anything, I don't even really drink, but um like, is it? Against the law for you to be reimbursed for entertainment or I I we don't have Kim here, so I. Entertainment or um alcohol, like. And not that I would say go out and, you know. But if you have a beer with dinner or whatever. Um is that? Like. Um and then like what if? You're at APA or what, you guys don't do a ton of travel, but like if you're at APA and. Uh or, you know, they do a bowling night or something, I guess that would be included maybe in the.
Yeah, we would do it differently, right, so we just have not ever done it, right, so we did have a.
Yeah, this was adapted from the city, and the city had no.
Okay.
And so I don't know if it's.
I don't know, it's a law or not.
Okay, I'm okay with no, I just. I mean, like, I don't, I go out for work and. And you know, this seems like there's too much. When we're lawyers.
It asks to furnish our. Our expenses that we, you know, the money we spend on food and. Somebody could see.
Yeah, I think, I think it's.
What it was used for. People entertaining themselves.
That's true.
Every one of these could be an area of abuse.
Yeah.
I know for the feds, they just gave a per diem and then they didn't have to get into this question. You know, you have a certain amount per day that you could use for meals or whatever and how you spent it was up to you. And that kept them out of the morass.
Well, I think for. All personnel that don't have purchasing cards, they get a per diem. So. They can buy whatever they want.
Well, they get it for DM, yeah, so they could buy whatever they want in terms of like. Uh bills and turning in receipts, we've just never done it and it's not like we don't, like, so we did have a big. You know, we invited everybody at LA to dinner. Uh we just. But privately, we have to have for alcohol, like that's not something.
You did it separately.
The library district.
Okay. That's fine, yeah.
So I mean, it's not like they're telling people, you can't drink, it's just like, we're not gonna build a library district for people drinking beer. I don't, I don't feel like comfortable with that, I don't know, like how other people.
Jen is smiling and I can't read her. Laughing now.
It's different in the business world, I think.
Yeah, that's the school board is the same way.
Yeah. That's fine.
The library will be busy and the team.
I'm not advocating for it, I'm just. I don't even, as I said, I don't even really drink. So. Yeah, and um.
Rather, rather busy.
Yeah, so uh. Okay, that's all I had.
Soon as I look at this, there is a per diem, it looks like if it's an overnight trip, it is per diem, so these are just.
And the other. As applicable to the library director, this policy as far as like if he goes out to. Uh takes. Uh like a. Someone out to dinner in the community. As a means of part of his job or his or her job. Whoever, I mean, would this policy apply or, okay?
Local business moves.
Right, local business moves, no, okay. I just don't want you to be restricted. Too much. If, you know, in that sense, but I'm okay with this. So.
Would it? That all be? Statement about sustainability and. I think related to the environment, the weakness about travel and.
Oh, like carbon, the most carbon neutral?
Yeah.
Well, we do it based on cost, so like if it would be. Cheaper for a coach class ticket from. Denver to. Columbus, Ohio or whatever, they would only reimburse up to the coach class ticket.
It's maybe, I don't know, I'm just thinking about just in the policy and just. I don't know, I don't know, I was just thinking about whether the city has a statement relating to. Sustainability, just there's a, in the procedure piece, there's something that it says that encourages the use of.
Yeah, section eight, public transportation.
That's pretty good.
Which helps. I mean. Yeah, I guess the problem is that. We, it's not actually probably better for the planet to drive. So I don't know how you put a policy in here. I mean, we could just add as long as it's better.
Not that.
She's not, no.
Well, if there's three people in a car, probably.
But I mean, like, it's, it's just, I'm not, like, I'm not sure how to. Cause we can say that, you know, we would. We would like people to, wherever possible, make sustainable choices about their travel, but it's just hard to make that balance.
You'll have to think about like some employees maybe have a legitimate disability and can't fly or, you know, and there's a whole other.
Yeah.
Whole other mess there.
Yeah, and we don't have a lot of choices here. You know, when you're talking business travel, they're not, you're not, it's not like New York or East Coast or something, have a lot of choices.
Yeah. Okay.
I'm always picking the thing that gets me home the fastest, so. Most of the time.
It's usually in university.
Okay. Any other comments? Are you trying to get your own, I guess? Uh, oh, okay, yes, alright. Alright, so I don't think there was any changes to this, except. Unless we wanna add to a sustainability thing. Alright, so.
No, there was, there was change.
The change in the first sentence about.
Change, oh, applies to trustees.
Applying to the trustees, yeah. Change in scope.
So this is, so we need to, we don't vote on this.
You'll get the policy pieces back on the thirty.
Vendor management procedures.
This one really had me excited.
My, I had one comment on this, um I think. Under section three where it says verifying vendor. We should also, this should also apply to any. Change in the vendor's payment information. So a lot of times what they'll say is, oh, we changed bank accounts. And so, um. They, you know, and so please deposit it in this, you know, new account, that's usually what happens. And they'll send you over a forged form or.
Oh, so you're saying to make it applied before entering this. Vendor in the system or before making changes to the vendor in the system?
Uh vendor like payment information, that makes sense. Because that's typically, that's like, I think, was it Boulder that got? Seven hundred K? Yeah, they they got seven hundred K swipes. Because the, they were like, hey, it's the construction project for some pride, I don't know, for a school district, yeah, that's what it was. And um here's the new bank account information, then you deposit seven hundred thousand dollars. And then we're working with the the FBI and stuff, so, you know, um. So yeah, I would say change, and then I say verify the, so I also um. Have experiences in my own work, not that we've done this, but we get these weird things. Um so I've worked a little bit with the FBI on this. Confirm ownership and vendor through a business registration database, complete due diligence uh for potential um. And then I'd say for change in payment information. They'll call their current contact on record. And verify. The change request. Hopefully that was.
Yeah.
They're they're sneaky, cause. I've had them like pack emails and then some emails from the people and. Yeah. Any other people have comments or? Okay. Uh this is the Boulder Public Library District Purchasing Policy and Procedure.
And I have one comment on this, um. So I think there's a conflict in language that we need to resolve, um. So you may recall last time we had the conversation about um wanting to include a partner and we went down the rabbit hole around that and came up with. A board member or someone with whom they share, they share financial interests, so now. Number three A addresses that, and I think that language is fine. But in the last part of that. It says the contract is awarded to the lowest responsible bidder, and we had decided that we did not want the lowest responsible bidder. And if you look at section four, six and and uh seven. Um six, which is the threshold for. Awarding things without going to the board of trustees, the director awards to the contractor, the contract that's most advantageous to the district. And if it's at the trustees level, it's the most responsive, responsible and best bid, which is different. Than the lowest responsible bidder, so I would just suggest removing that lowest responsible bidder and replacing it with something like. In accordance with the competitive bidding procedures in articles four and five.
I agree. So replace. Uh three, number one, with that.
The the last sentence.
Just the last, so after is awarded.
And then would you? Would you want a change to be made to either six or seven?
No.
To make them.
No, they're fine, no, it's fine that there was a reason for the distinction in six and seven, that was fine. So I just say is awarded in accordance with the competitive bidding procedures in articles four and five.
Well, that was the, those were the passages that are related on page twenty or two of this policy. Areas, there you can include that, um and also on page one or nine. We added part B to section one. And clarified. Parts B and C to section two and then. After. Reviewing your feedback with Adrian and we realized we had forgotten to include. Yes, so um. On page three, uh by. Number one and two, we'd like to include. Sorry.
Cooperative purchasing organization.
Yeah, um, the city allows, uh, purchases through these, uh, organizations such as Omni, Edv and Sourcewell. So long as they reference, uh, the. Um, agreement, government agreement that they have negotiated in the purchasing agreement or contract. And so they eliminate the need to do an RFP and these two groups have contracts in place. And they range all from like furniture to, uh, plumbers, all kinds of stuff. Um, so we could potentially use these. Groups as a a another way to do. Cooperative purchase, they're open to that. And then on also the city had a, a process for when it's. Nearly impossible to get a, uh, group of bids from. Um, a manufacturer, say for example, like, uh, our tier selling system, there are very few vendors that. Produce those, and so. In in the case of the no, the no-bowl purchase, um, we lower a single source justification that was approved by the city. Purchase of that, and that was because they're just starting. There's hard, it's hardly, uh, possible to give this or something like that, so. There's a form that you write up the justification, yes, there's some questions around. Around why it's, why you need to do it, how much it is, all that stuff, and then. Um, I would assume that the director would approve it between fifty and a hundred thousand dollars, and then if it was more than that. We bring it to the board.
Does that all make sense to you guys? Because this is one of those things that is extraordinarily complicated and we'll be back to and revisiting, you're gonna say like, why did we do? Because it is oftentimes with the vendor, like, there's one coming up, and I'll touch on that. Or we're doing a pilot with sensors in bathrooms, so there are multiple companies, there's only one company that makes it. Um, there's multiple companies that will install it, and lo and behold, the company that is already our contracted company. For security services, did it for like half, does it for like half the price of the other firm, so. Like, we went with that, um, and it's way under the fifty thousand, but it's a pilot right now. But should we go live the whole system, like, and we might after we tested. Uh, then it's gonna be probably in the wheelhouse for you guys to make the decision. Spend a hundred thousand dollars to do, you know, bathroom monitoring sensors for various airborne stuff, right? But at that point, the likelihood of us getting three bids is pretty minimal. Because we've already worked for a company and. That were already under contract. So it's. It's a little messy, I mean, it's not messy, it's just, it could, from your advantage, I mean, I don't want it to be, I don't want it to seem. We we ask for different companies to look and install. It's not surprising that the company that does our data works, like, yeah, it will be out tomorrow, and at half the price of the other company.
Um, it's clearly uncommon to do it, and just because we have, well, we we did one with the city jointly. For no-bowl. They need to plan to do that, because it's it's.
Sometimes you just gotta do it. I just. If they have a patent on it, that's a lot of times, or IP or. You know, specified.
And I'll just point out, you did include some language explaining when it's justified, if you look at page twenty-three. Five, there's a new paragraph under competitive bids. Says may be submitted to the library director, the board of trustees for approval for purchases from a vendor is the only practically available source. From which the product or service can be obtained.
Can I ask about one B? I mean. With the different goal I support or priority that's important, is that language suggested by our attorney specifically? I thought that's right, is when possible? And how do we define when possible, like, there there are some, some organizations have very specific procedures for evaluating this and.
No, I looked, uh, uh, how the those businesses are referenced. And I put one massive. So I can change that.
Well, I. Uh, I just wanna make sure we have a specific process where that is taken into consideration during our. With our bidding and evaluation, uh, because I wanna. Partly because I wanna make sure we do it right, and partly because I wanna make sure we're protected if, um, someone should push that, that we made, that chose they disagree with.
Yeah, historically, we've made it about a five percent of the overall score. I don't know if that's something you want us to document here, but that's kind of how we've done it. So we we, in the overall evaluation of the things, we have, we use some scoring metrics and the, oh, and in the overall evaluation, the score. Um, minority women owned and other disadvantaged business enterprises had a five percent, so it had, had you marked that thing. You got a five points out of it.
They have to disclose it.
Yeah, what if instead of preference will be given, we say credit will be, like, credit will be given. I don't know if that makes.
That has so many more meanings, I think that would be.
You think, okay.
Well, and we use preference above.
I think preference was the proper legal term.
Alright, then. Then maybe we just get rid of when possible.
I I would not get rid of when possible, and that's from my experience as a contracting officer's rep with the feds, simply because. So many of these don't check minority or women-owned or disadvantaged businesses, and they've just got somebody they put up as a figurehead. And it's a big company behind it, and it takes, you know, you kind of have to sift through and figure that out, it's 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 unfortunate that that's the case.
That is a rampant problem right now.
Yeah.
I don't think we've encountered it yet, I mean.
I think you've stated the value that you give, and you know, you make the your best effort to do that. But I think you have to be able to have, to to wiggle out, especially if you see one of these. You know, big engineering firms that says, oh, I'm a woman-owned company, or whatever it is.
Yeah, and that's what I'm thinking of, right, so when, uh, so no-bowl, for instance, right, so, uh. Oh, a woman-owned firm won the bid for the architect, but in terms of contractors. I think there was a minority-owned business that put forth a bid, but they were not deemed capable of doing the construction project. So the only three finalists were all large.
Yep.
You know, white male-owned companies.
Yeah.
For the construction, that was the city, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll just another suggestion, uh, which you can, when when we say when possible, like, considering the totality of the circumstances? Or would that, does that help or not help? No.
I don't know if it adds anything.
Okay, it did add some words.
Yeah.
So. Sam, I don't know.
Well, here's my legal team here at the table.
I think it's, I think that's, I think the way it is is the best.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I think as long as you are documenting the, your decision metrics like you normally do. Then you can say, you know, we have the language here, and then you can say, you know, like. Um, you know, we looked at it, so.
And and I think if anything were to happen to somebody with a question, we would wind up doing an audit, and I I can tell you right now, like. Our two biggest contractors, the security contract and the cleaning contractor, both minority-owned businesses, like, that was a big factor in the decision like that. There were a lot of really good security companies that we interviewed, um, this was the only one that was a minority-owned business.
You know, legitimate.
Um, just disadvantaged business enterprises, that, where is that definition from?
They call, uh, disadvantaged businesses and.
I just don't know what that means.
Right.
I don't know.
It is a federal term.
Oh, it's, this is like a, as long as it means something.
I was actually wondering about minority as a term, I don't know if that's. That'd still be. What would you like it to say?
Well, I don't know, I mean, I. You know, I mean, just in the equity arena. Yeah. Generally, defined as people of color and, you know, in a broader sense, right?
I think we need to look at, we have to go and look at, sorry.
Right, no, no.
Uh, so like the primary statute that I have to deal with, and I'm sorry, it's two CFR part two hundred, that includes the federal procurement guidelines. And they have language that says, one of the provisions is contracting with small and minority businesses, comma. With women's business enterprises and labor surplus area firms, so I mean, I'm okay with sticking with the.
That's fine.
Yeah, it does say minority, so small and minority businesses, comma, women's. Business enterprises, and I don't know, like, if we need to include labor surplus, probably not, but the other, the others, I think. At least that's a standard language that everyone will kind of know.
Yeah, the definition behind it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So strike disadvantaged.
So should we end in small?
I I like small, but I mean, that also adds to the fighting against the big.
Yeah.
The big corporation.
Okay.
And I I'm gonna guess that's what was meant by disadvantaged, but when.
Yes, yeah, yeah, totally.
You know, small businesses also have a clear definition.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And small. Strike disadvantaged.
Yeah.
Jen, can you hear me? What is it about this room that makes it sound like the silence is heavy?
I know, I feel like it's like, I'm like. Sell the eggs, sell the eggs. We're not as like feisty over.
So it has a comment in here, it says, transportation, colon, DVEs are for profit, small businesses concerns. Where socially and economically disadvantaged individuals own at least a fifty-one percent interest. And also control management and daily business operations.
And what, where's that definition from?
Jen just typed it in.
Oh.
U S Department of Transportation is our website. Okay.
But if we're gonna pull from the bar on one side and then DOT.
I mean, whatever, yeah.
Yeah.
They're all together, certainly, like.
I'd say we just stick with the lang, my my preference, I, we stick with the language that Sylvia proposed.
Okay.
Yeah.
So strike disadvantaged.
Yeah.
Are you good with that, Jen? Looks very serious. Anyone be up for saying for preference? Preference will be given through an equitable scoring process.
Well, I'd ask you guys that first.
Is that how it works?
Which is what David says happens.
Yeah, that's what we do, I mean, so we have a scoring matrix, which would announce the nine, five, nine, seven percent, and then there's five percent that you.
That's fine.
So all things being equal, in the final results, if it's a minority-owned business, we go.
I'd say not say equitable, that would be my only, because it leaves a lot of room for interpretation, just say scoring matrix.
So then it wouldn't be preference, it would be selection is made, given, made through a scoring process. Is that's pretty much what it is.
When everything equal, right, because I think when possible, is that means when everything is equal, reference will be given to this type of places.
Uh, I don't think we should add that language, I just.
The scoring.
The scoring process.
It's our last meeting, you can't like, let her get some language.
But it did, I think.
She has one more.
I was gonna suggest we just punch on this, because I would also kind of want Kim to see this, like, I don't want us to like say a bunch of like. Worry things and then have Kim go, no, sorry, this isn't, I I I mean, there's lots of different ways we could go with this, I mean, we could also say. Um, preference points will be given to you, blah, 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 like. You know, but I mean, that would make it simple, but I I would suggest that we get Kim to weigh in on this, just because.
We're we're guessing, I think.
All over the place.
Yeah, we are guessing.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay, she says, um, so it's gone to Sam's question about how we actually execute our preference. In show process. And then I think in response to what Sylvia was saying, it says that is fair, but I agree with Sam, it's very broad and doesn't protect us right now. So I could submit this to, uh, to Kim and flag that piece and ask for his recommendation. And that, yeah, include whatever that is in the final.
Right, okay, yeah, I mean, and I mean, we're talking basically about procurement, it's interesting, so. Yeah, um, you know, that was not maybe different, and. You know, we just want to be sure of the right language for that.
You know. We don't have an equity statement as a district.
No, you, you adopted the full equity policy, so yeah, it's it's way bigger and we committed to coming back to it, but we haven't done so yet, yeah.
Oh, but that would be the, you know, sort of the overarching. Guiding document of a policy like this.
And it does, I mean, the principal things of it, I mean, the one, one was a defense for the programming and work that we do, but the the biggest part of it was through procurement, right? That is the, the meat of that policy that the city has, and so it is in there, we could probably drag it back out, we 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 need to, we need to stream. I mean, you guys said it at the time, we need to streamline that thing down to a three-page document rather than a four-page document, but it's not something that's on our work plan right now.
Yeah, we usually like a statement, I mean, it is just, you know, it is a one-pager, just like, you know, certain value of the organization, and then. You know, these things kind of align with that, but. And others, other pieces do, you know, the equity plan and, you know, other organization and all those things. Sort of fit with it, right, and. But I could see like. Some entity going after a district, somebody like us, like an entity like ours, because it's an easier target than a city. Or, you know, and so we need to be very careful about. These pieces and what we're doing here, so. Yes, so caution is.
I I just wrote down the, we'll come, I'll put that on the work plan, the equity stuff, the equity statement.
You should just be very careful of this, because it could, you could be a very easy target for those kind of things, and, you know. There's some regard that you need to have an audit or some evaluation before you can establish. A preference for some of these things and. Yeah, that. And you don't have, we don't have any data to back up why we're doing this, and preference of local over, um, local. So yes, just raised with like, I mean, there's some.
So, um, we're past one B. And I think you've explained most of the other highlighted sections, right? Uh, I do have a, and then there's a change to three, one. And. Okay, just a nitpicky thing. I don't know, I guess that's okay. You have like three, one, two, and then up here you have one, A, B.
Oh, yeah.
And then you have two, A, B, C, D, and then you have.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Sorry, for, and then, um, so, uh. My other questions, uh, on this exceptions list. Uh, for obtaining competitive bids, this list of twenty things seems, um. Long, and that, i- i- it's more like, it's like that you include too much, you mean to include everything. Uh, and should we have like an exception for like purchases under like five hundred dollars, like you don't need to get a competitive bid or?
That's already awesome.
Oh.
So.
What did I miss there? Oh, Scott left in a thousand dollars. Okay. Well, that just says comparison pricing, okay. Okay. We'll never know. We'll fix the. Numerating.
Yes, I'll fix that. Or it just has a minus.
Well, if you look at what's on this list of twenty, I mean, it really. There are things that are normal business or.
Right.
Ready, sole source.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah, so. I'm not sure what you're saying, you want it to go away, I mean, you wouldn't wanna do competitive bidding for any of these, so I think they're simply. Garfield County, I'm sure this just came from.
Uh, most of it, yeah.
Yeah.
Added some of the last.
They just tried to think of what's the normal, doing business stuff that you wouldn't wanna bog down in competitive bidding.
Yeah.
I mean, it seems to me like a decent list. Remembering that Garfield County is a little bit anti-intentive in the way they write their policy.
But the auditor likes them.
I'm sure the auditor likes them, that's important, you know, this is, this is probably the core auditor policy, right?
I mean, cause it says like, employee benefits payments. Like, we did competitively bid that, that's, so, I guess like, um.
Not, not a, we, we selected a, uh, we selected a firm to bid them for.
They bid it for us, but I, it just seems. Like we might get tripped up. If. Something's not on this exception, that's my phrase, like something, somebody buys something, it's not, let's say you spend. Twenty-five thousand dollars on a vehicle. Forty-nine thousand. Or fifty-one thousand dollars on a vehicle. Is, um. We didn't, I, I mean, we comparative shopped that, but we didn't competitively bid it. That's my.
So, there's a clause on my end here that the library director can. Wave.
Yeah.
Essentially wave the need for. Competitive bid, I think.
You've comparison shopped or something?
Yeah.
I mean, you have to have a line somewhere.
Yeah, that's what I mean, but.
I'm not sure what, I'm, I'm not sure where you're going with this.
I just thinking that, I, my point is, is this, I'm sorry for this, it's just like.
It's the list too long, meaning there's too many exceptions, or the list is so long that it's in, incomprehensible.
And there is a Latin phrase, it's like, what, uh, Cassius Omissus or something like that, you know, like. If you include everything, then you meant to exclude everything else. Okay, so that's, it's just.
So, you're concerned that there are things that aren't on this list? And thus wouldn't be excluded.
Yeah.
But because we listed everything, we meant it to be exclusive.
Yeah, sorry.
So, I mean, we can just add without limitation before the list.
But I think that.
But then.
If you do that, that just takes away the whole basis for the exception. I think.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's.
I think I'm over, I think I'm overthinking this, so don't worry. Sorry.
I mean, if something comes up in the future that you think should be an exception, you can change the.
Yeah, 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 I mean, we.
Or the worst.
We have comparison shopping, and so I think that's fine.
Uh, yeah, okay.
I, yeah, I think it, my, my grape is, you have things you bid, and then you have things you purchase. You know, and maybe there's, you know. All right.
The board's not getting any shout out.
Sorry, I'm just digging myself. All right, any other comments besides mine? I'm trying to give you as much leeway, staff, as possible, if you, if you understand my intent.
I appreciate it.
To, to manage the day-to-day operations without covering some bureaucratic, bureaucratic. Um, oversight, when I know that you have the best intentions for mine.
Yeah, and, you know, I mean, to put some, for some perspective on it, right, so a big thing here, here is the books and materials. So, that is a two million dollar purchase every year. Uh, we, we do lock into certain vendors, but based on their kind of predisposition to supply us a lot of different things, so like. There, there are not that many choices in the field, but if one company is. Saying, like, we're asking about books, and they're like, well, those aren't really library books, that's not for them to decide, cause the distribution companies control a lot. So, we go with the companies who are more like, yeah, we'll look into it, right, like that's, and so we, do we wind up paying maybe a slightly higher price for a. Independently published book at one point or juncture along the way, maybe. But it's probably because the other vendor would not supply it to us, and we want a book.
Yeah.
And so, i- i- that, that's the big one that you're, that is the big part of what you were freeing up here and all the exceptions is.
Books.
Uh, yeah, number four, library materials, this year it will be about two million bucks, right, for spending on library materials. That's the public wants, and that's what we try to do best.
I was just gonna suggest, can we just double check the agenda and have the other comments or input?
It feels like we're consulting with like a computer mind.
Part of what I hear.
And you like, look to Jen, it makes me think that you're consulting with like, a computer mind. Yeah, it's like, what is, what is happening?
Talking, so, the mind is talking. See what she says.
Exactly.
She have wisdom for us.
I'm good, I was going to make a bad joke, but about AI.
We need to look at the characters in this.
Yeah, did it go on?
In the AI. But it's not AI, um. So, if no other questions on the purchasing policy, we'll move on and we're not voting on these. Right, Celia or Jen? Okay, that's already good, that's thirty years. All right, so, the next item on the agenda is the, um. Handbook.
Yeah, and I'll pick that up, so we reviewed this last time, and we had one change. To, um, page twenty-seven, it's page three of the trustee handbook, the. Fifth bullet. Um, we wanted to change how we had described the place of work, and so this is the language that Sylvia and I came up with. Helping determine and advocate for an employment package, including salaries and benefits, that makes the Boulder Public Library a desirable place to work. I mean, if there are no other changes, I think this is ready for approval. Um, just to note that at some point, um, staff will come back to update the overview of library operations, because this. Reflects the division of operations when this was still a city. One organization, and I, I think it's different, yeah. Yeah.
Um, does that, do you want me to write that up and put it in the packet?
Is, is that, I didn't understand, is, is, is. Twenty-nine, the overview of what, part of the handbook?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yeah, the handbook was intended to try and orient a aid person to what.
Ah, okay.
It was.
Okay.
Here's how the library is organized, here's what the library foundation is, these are the major relationships.
Okay.
Um, so I think you could approve tonight, the handbook, and then when you guys are ready, you could bring back. An adjustment to the overview of library operations, and then the board could approve that portion. Um, in the future, so you don't hold up the rest of it.
Jen says, this is great, I move to approve with the changed language.
Second, what are we doing?
Any, uh, discussion? New discussion? New discussion? You have to say it three times at the Boulder Democrats on anything. All right, Roberts rules or whatever, all right, then, uh, all in favor of approving the handbook?
Fine.
We'll post, seeing none, it approved unanimously. Okay. Uh, moving on to the director update.
Yeah, so I apologize for not getting in writing this, uh, week. Um, but there's a lot to report, most of it is, uh, you know, just a heads up, but, um. The big thing is hiring is well underway and on pace, like we are. Uh, I, I think our head of HR referred to, I'm not sure if there's a team, but she referred to it as a machine today, and it is kind of a machine, we. We started nine people, uh, last Monday, I think six start. Next Monday, uh, there are two or three more people who are already been offered and accepted and are in the pipeline. Uh, big news, like the, on this coming Monday, the first two new hires. For NOBO will begin, uh, training here at the main library, so it, it's really exciting times, uh, a lot going on. Uh, we did, as you approved in the budget, we had a space reconfiguration. Underway, that kind of was very hectic over the last two weeks, but I think is mostly done. Uh, everybody has power, everybody has places, I think there were a few data things left to figure out today, but they may have gotten all done today, so. Um, yeah, so, you know. Love to show you around, if, if we were over in the other building, I'd walk you over to show, uh, resource services, but I don't know if you ever saw it before, so it was a big mess. And it looks absolutely wonderful now, so it was really, uh, all. Uh, furnishings, the upstairs, I sort of canyon, uh, on the, on the canyon side. Uh, totally kind of reconfigured, there's a staff meeting room, multiple drop-down stations, and everybody who, all, everybody who we have hired and. The new people coming on, I'll have a chair to sit in, so it's gonna be, it's pretty exciting times, um. A lot of the other stuff is really coming up, so, um, it is seventy-four days before the big joint opening party, June twenty-ninth. Mark your calendar, I'm expecting that some of you will be giving speeches. Uh, I know we already have the mayor committed to give a speech, June twenty-ninth, Saturday. Uh, the timing for the speeches hasn't, they're working on the party still as we speak. Um, but I'm thinking they're probably gonna go on between eleven and twelve, if that's your bag of bones. If you want, you know, banjo players and face painting, it's gonna be happening all day, we'll probably have, uh. Probably have food and, um, cupcakes and tacos, I have no idea, but there'll, there'll be, it'll be a big party all day, a lot of family fun stuff, so you know. People with kids, bring them out, uh, when we did the groundbreaking, a lot of you were there, there was, I think there were. Close to two hundred people just for the groundbreaking, where we stuck a spade in the dirt and gave some speeches, so I don't know what we expect, I think initially I was thinking. Two hundred, but I'm thinking it's probably more like, a lot more, um, and it'll be all day, and then there will be people, um, you know, filtering in over the course of the following few weeks. Uh, it's July fourth weekend, immediately following that, uh, party, the next weekend is July fourth, so I don't know what kind of traffic we're gonna have the following week, but I'm. I'm guessing robust, um. The, uh, we probably open the building, um, to the public. In around sixty days, right, so that is, I mean, we're, we're closing in, project is nearly done, they're doing concrete work, we walked by, concrete work and asphalt. Roads going in, stairs going in, project is nearly done, uh. Shelving arrives this week, um, it's pretty exciting, like, and once the books start going on the shelf, which is not for another. Few weeks, but it'll be fun to get up there and see the building, I've seen it enough times and its permutations, but I know there are people that, who haven't, so if you haven't. It's absolutely stunning, the light in that space is worth the price of admission. Um, it's really a great, a gorgeous building from the inside and out, so I'm really looking forward to it. Um, a lot of other stuff coming, um, to, so it's eighty days till the theater, uh, opens, uh, for the public to book as they choose. We'll probably launch, um, the, the open registration next month, middle of next month, so a month from now, it'll be. Groups can go in and just register to do, take over the theater for. One day or, it's up to sixteen hours a month, uh, there are a lot of groups that are already scheduled, but then we were talking to a lot of partner organizations. And organizations that do that type of things that would be in the theater, but if you know other groups, please try to start getting the word out, um. We will be putting the word out in a marketing, uh, and communications work plan that you'll also see. Uh, probably in the, not the next meeting, but the meeting after that, we will have that planned for you. Uh, so you can take a look at some of the plan for promotion of all of these things that are happening. And then also tying it into a kind of an overarching message that will then also feed into. NOBO, the cafe, the Canyon Theater, Gun Barrel, the literacy plan, and all of those things kind of signed together. Most of it is a, you know, the firm that we hired, uh, we hired, I think primarily because. They were, it was tactile in nature, it is not, it's not like changing our colors and getting a feeling and, and spending months, it's literally like. This is how many ads you should have on, uh, social media, this is where you should pay for ads, this is what we should do in radio. This is what we should do, perhaps on television, there are a lot of things that seem initially scary, um. You know, and so we're, we're weighing that with the group right now, like, it seems crazy, like a television bias is crazy, it's like. It's like forty bucks, right, so you produce a commercial and like, you can get a spot on a local television. For like forty bucks, and so it's like, I was thinking like, well, if it works, then maybe we will do that, I, I have no idea if it'll work, we've never done this, right, so the. City of Boulder is not a big, uh, marketing, you know, they don't believe in it, um, it's not a big part of what we do, so it's all kind of new territory for us. Uh, the firm that we're working with is local, they've got the whole team, uh, this week or last week, I can't even remember which. Um, but they seem awesome, and, uh, we'll have a work plan ready to go for you guys in about four weeks, we'll look at it internally in about. I think three, and then so, but it's gonna be, we're a little bit behind, Maria finally hired somebody, so we have a, a department of two. Uh, which is awesome, and hopefully growing to three, uh, sometime soon as well, so, um. But as it ramps up, uh, we'll be dealing with this, um, big, um. The other things that are coming up, I kind of mentioned the halo system, so we are doing a pilot in the bathrooms, we've been planning on doing it for, we. Asked the city to do it for us over a year ago, um, they never quite got around to it, so we're investigating it further. So, it is a sensor system, the best way I can describe it, and it's kind of like one of those. Things you hang around your grandma's neck and an Apple Watch combined, so it will tell you a lot of things that are going on, uh, in the bathrooms, in each stall. So, it gives alerts for any kind of CO2 displacement, so anything that's lit, but including vaping, um. And, uh, it detects, uh, excess motion, it detects lack of motion. It detects multiple people in a stall, all of which are kind of signs for us to investigate, and so we will pilot that, it's gonna happen very quickly, um. They ran the data this week, we'll get the, the systems in, put into the bathrooms here, and we'll begin exploring it. So, you're gonna see eventually, if we decide to go forward, it's a big price tag. I just wanna remind you that it's a very big price tag to have a paid guard sitting in the bathroom for a long period of time, and nobody likes it. Nobody likes putting up their bags, I've seen it referred to as like the. Or, you know, we're, you know, we're worse than TSA now, given that they have these new digital way, I went through TSA in five minutes the other day, it's like. It seems like more work to go to the bathroom here, so I, I'd love to get it out from under it, I don't think that's imminent, but it could be. In the next three to six months, that we are no longer having guards at the bathrooms, and we're using the sensor system and the alerts. That it provides on the phone, but it is a, that's a pilot program for this library alone, which we would then expand. To all of the public restrooms, uh, within the district if it works, so. Um, the other big thing that we have coming, and I didn't get a chance to talk to Jen about this today, but we'll be bringing you an accessibility policy and. Probably May, June as well, so the, um. Colorado State passed a, a web accessibility law, uh, about ninety days ago, uh, it goes into effect July first. Uh, we have to, I mean, the main things are, we need to have a, uh, we have a statement that's now up on the web, uh, we will. We do have to have a policy approved by you, uh, that we are, uh, doing our due diligence to get everything in shape. Most of it is, a lot of the stuff that you see on the library's webpages, they're from vendors, and so we basically scrape their policies, and we can put links to those on our webpage, but we have to. We have to do a policy, we have to do a, a, a statement, and we have to do a relatively, uh. A plan of action, which, um, we are, you know, copying, I think, probably, now it's not Garfield, but it's something like that, um. We'll copy a plan of action to implement the plan over the course of some years, but. So, um, I'm happy to take any questions that you may have on anything. More stuff coming down the pipe, right, it's, uh, the, the big one right now is hiring. Wear your name tags in your library, I mean, we are all wearing our name tags pretty diligently right now, because like. Every day you run into people on the hall, and you may not see a single familiar face on the desk. Um, which is interesting for working here, so, um. I, I am very pleased to, to the NOBO people that we hired, the two people that started on Monday. One of them was a barista, it's not gonna be a barista at NOBO, but he was at Logan's, uh, Cafe, which is an institution in North Boulder. And so he's well-known to the community, he knows the community well, and the other person is coming back to Boulder Public Library, having worked for us before. But also lives in North Boulder, so they both live up there, I think they're gonna be great additions to the team, it'll be exciting, that. Celia, I'm sorry, Celine, has this goal, that she wants. Every single person on the floor, the day we open, to be a fam- Every single person on the floor, the day we open to be a familiar face to someone who walks in the door. And I, I, it's a great, it's a great hiring kind of goal to have, like, people that were there that when people walk in, they find somebody that they know, um, right off the bat, so. Great intent, we'll see if it all plays out, we have a bunch of people left to hire up there in the next few weeks, so.
If you haven't had a chance to look at the reconfigured spaces, I'd recommend it, it's really cool, it's just so much. Was there before, opened up the light, opened up spaces for people, it's great.
Yeah, um, I, I should say with NOBO, you know, so we've been speaking and we hear a lot. Um, Doug and Sam are joining me. This Friday to talk with a, either a person or a group, I'm not sure which, but a person who represents a group at the very minimum about a lot of different things. The comments that we're hearing and that are coming through my email are all around. All the stuff we're gonna do to activate the entire area and what responsibilities we're gonna take outside, and. We don't have a, a, a whole lot of responsibility outside, we'll do the best we can to activate the area. But that's gonna activate the area by people coming, right? And so inevitably, uh, like we've seen over the last couple of weeks downtown, there is a level of friction which generates uh criticism. Uh, I think, you know, people blame the library for things that are not our responsibility. But you know, when people were proud of the playground that went in here in twenty fifteen, I mean, we did have people who put input in it, but it's not our playground. We didn't, we didn't tell them like when they were saying like, what a great playground, we were like, oh, call Parks and Rec and tell them. So in some ways, like when people are calling complaining about the playground. We take an element of responsibility, I'm, I've been out talking to all the people in the camps. I met with Parks and Rec Director last week, I met with the Parks and Rec team downtown. This week about this playground and how we can make sure that we um. You know, do the right maintenance um and keeping it clean, so it is, it is a responsibility, it's a joint responsibility obviously, but it's not one that we can. Totally shirk away from, uh, we will, we are beginning to enter the fray to a certain extent on. Social media next door is the big one, but Reddit subs also and others. The places to refer people to the right proper place to file a complaint of encampment, but then also to uh. You know, say, hey, we're library employees and come down here and talk to us, and or come down and talk to them. Cause we're open to talk to them and sit down and talk about all of these different issues, but around NOBO. Um, the two primary things that I'm hearing and I think we'll hear all the way through the opening and beyond is. A, the issue around the unhoused and in the general vicinity of North Boulder. And then the thing that we've been hearing, I've been hearing at every community meeting I've gone to and now from individuals is the um. The limited extent to which we implemented all of the ideas around green and sustainable architecture. And so, you know, the complaint this week was that we're not doing the full scope of the uh solar panels. And you know, it's kind of nice to get that kind of feedback, because it comes down, it's one of those things which we talked about when we. Sign the IGA, it's a very different thing between price and cost, right, so. The price of doing things sometimes is not, they're, they're not the same. And so we will have to revisit some of those elements over the next two to three years as we can afford them. Uh, of implementing some of the things that were promised to the community or part of the story of what this new building was in North Boulder. Uh, it is gonna be a highly efficient building, I think it's something we can all be proud of, but there's further. Ways to go, and there are some people in the community who remember the story from twenty eighteen. And they are, you know, they're not entirely super excited until we express that, like. We believe it's a legacy project, it's gonna be there a hundred years, and we have every intent of doing everything we can to make it a sustainable and efficient build. So uh, if you hear those kind of comments, our goal is to do, we are putting solar is going in, I think this week or next. Um, but it's limited, right, it's not the whole thing, and there's a whole expansive roof that's ready to accept solar at the point at which we can afford it. Um, and we will do so, it, it'll come in before you and a bunch of diamonds, we'll do all that, but there are a lot of urgent needs. Um, you know, we, all buildings still leak, um, hopefully that one doesn't, um, but uh. But, so.
If I can add something to that comment, I mean, I, I think part of the story is just reminding people that the core of sustainability is the envelope. And the building and the way it's been designed, the solar panels are something you see. But that's not what really contributes it, it's how it's built, and so for everybody, I just remind people that. Sustainability has been built into it in terms of the walls and the windows and the orientation. It is designed to be a, a, a building that does not use a lot of energy, and that's the most efficient way. To do buildings and then adding solar when you can do it is gravy on top of it, yeah, so.
Yeah, solar was never gonna get us that far to being a net zero building, there are other elements that were critical, but, and those are mostly. Implemented, I mean, it is fully electrical building, that's not true of all of our buildings, I think maybe it's the only one. Um, so, you know, it's, it's gonna be a highly efficient, really, uh, you know, good operating building, so. I, it's something we can all be proud of, I, I do have a list somewhere in Antonio's files of all the things that did go into the building. Not all the things that were limited, taken out, I mean, and so, I think probably a lot of people's minds go to what's not there now, but I think we can, uh, I have. Pull that list out so we can have it ready for comments like we had this week.
So one other thought, back when this was first starting up, this notion of how, how a building is made green, um, Grand Teton National Park. Built a building and they used it as an exhibit, they put up little signage inside about, you know. Here is, this is why this is efficient, not is why this is, maybe consider something like that for this building, it'd be a great. Educational opportunity for people, cause I think people tend to think. Of it as solar panels when, you know, if you've got your own house, you know, it's getting rid of the leaks and all those kinds of things. That'd be, could be even a fun project that you enlist the community in to do, get, you know, high school kids to come in and.
Yeah.
And college folks.
Yeah, we may, I mean, we discussed it through the course of the construction and we, and ultimately dropped the whole like pedagogy of the building again. But I mean, I think the architect is obviously very interested in it, I mean, I think they will be, they will be there on. The twenty-ninth and they will be there the week after, they're happy to give tours and talk about all the things that we did do in the building, what the overall. Vision was for the facility and all the things that went into it, so it was a, you know, it was a, a passion project for them, and I think it's their very first. Public building west of the Mississippi, so they're, you know, they're super proud of the work. I'm definitely gonna take the tour from them. They, they'll announce it, they, they'll do it on the day of the twenty-ninth, I, there could be a thousand people there, you know, dripping cupcakes off all over the.
No, we're not gonna let them in. You can't touch the, you can't touch the new building. Don't wanna sour it. That's. I have, it's just a, on the new staff, is it? Like, I met a few of the new staff, like, so. I would encourage all of our trustees, like, I, I try to work in some of the libraries at least one day a week if I can, a few hours. Uh, if you can, like, you know, I come Friday afternoons and like. Sit in the cafe or um, I went to Reynolds the other day. But I'd met some of the new staff, so if you, if you, you don't have to, but it, it's nice, I think that. Uh, but I was wondering on the, for the new staff, when you hire them, do you guys send out like a, here's the new faces to like?
Uh, the faces thing is something we're working on, we send out a list every week of the new staff that are starting.
Okay.
And the people who are in the pipeline and then the jobs that we're interviewing for.
It'd be just nice to see like, not when they're officially hired and on boarded, like. And you, if you sent it out to at least us trustees or say like, we just hired Seth for what went, you know, or. Uh, for the Reynolds Library and, or Neil, I mean, and you know, like. And here's where he's from and, you know, he used to work at the library, just so that. I can recognize the new faces and all, everybody else can and.
Yeah, well, I, I think we can, we can probably get Libby to dust off the list that she sent and say some of those, it's. It's, 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 you know, it's great, like, see the name, the, the, the supervisors themselves are the ones who do the introductions, and that, that's gonna be a lot of emails, because. Each supervisor writes an introduction to who their employees are, and then we also introduce them in our staff chat, so we all talk to each other and. Welcome to the team and say hello, we get to see their faces, the faces thing is a little bit problematic on teams, cause I, I don't feel as like. There's some hitch where not everybody's able to put their face on the.
Yeah.
Teams thing, I, I don't know why it's not working perfectly, but.
Yeah.
It's teams.
Yeah, but the best way to do it is, you know, you see somebody working there behind a desk in a library, introduce yourself. Because, you know, they need to know who you are, and the fact is, is that. There, it's a lot of them now, and you're not gonna remember all their names, but like, you know, that, that goes a long way, saying, hey, I'm a trustee and.
And I failed to do it tonight, but all the staff are wearing their badges, so they have know their names. You might wanna talk to the, cause it's a lot of new faces, so also, I, I put my, my little badge on. So that people know who I am and don't have to guess my name. It's biggest name, um. Uh, so I guess you guys are all getting together, that's good, I just want, I like, if we do like an ice cream social or something in, in the summer, that maybe. Uh, like, so that, with the trustees, you know, uh, just something simple.
That's it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that, once we get the people on board and. They can meet us all and all that stuff.
How about if we do it on the, in the theater, you guys have to go up on the stage, we'll have really bright shining lights on here, and then you each have to give a little speech. That could be nice, no?
We can get input on the theater already, I, I told them to email you.
Yeah, so we do a big thing in, in Staff Day and you guys are all, you guys will be invited, you were invited last year, so that happens in September.
Okay, yeah.
We do have all the staff who are here, we all eat lunch together, uh, the foundation buys us an ice cream we brought to. Go, it's, it's a fun day and it's a great time to get in touch with people. It's in September too late.
That's too late, like, you know, it'd be something, like if we did something quarterly, could be a good idea. To be doing, I mean, how many new hires have there been in this first quarter?
I think, uh, twenty, I don't know.
Yeah. It's been more than that, cause it was fifteen, you said there were nine, so it must be over thirty.
Yeah, it's a lot of people, I, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know either, like, it's a, it's a growing list, like, we, you know, and April's the big month, right?
Yeah. Just following your thinking there, just something even quarterly, like if there was the, the, whatever the. Huddle is that you do, you know, even attend that, you know, to just pop into that with. Donuts, you know, whatever it is, right? Just to join in if trustees can do that.
You just remember if there's more than two of you, it becomes a public meeting.
Yeah, so you guys might wanna discuss, it's a, we do staff chat every month, it would be. It would be, you know, I, I don't know how comfortable they would be feeling if you would sit in, like. That's what you're doing, thanks, but you could pop up virtually and say, hey, welcome to the library and I'm the new trustee.
Yeah.
You know, president and like, I really am super glad you're here, or whatever, like, that would be awesome. The, the huddle we do every day and they're grown to, like, there, there was a huddle the other day that like had like thirty-five people in it, I was like, oh my god. But um, you're welcome to come to the, it's fifteen minutes and it has a, a set set like agenda, like we. We knock out all the things that are happening that day at all the locations in typically under ten minutes, so it's not necessarily a great. But we do introductions as well, we introduce new staff there.
How about this, we'll just take an action to like, maybe talk to the HR lead and just see. If there's a way to engage that, you know, later and come back to the board about it.
Yeah, I, I'll bring the dates for the staff chats, uh, next meeting.
Yeah.
And then you guys can decide if, you know, if you wanna pop up on virtually on the camera for a minute and introduce yourselves and say hello and. And everybody will say hello back.
Rotate that around.
Yeah.
Yeah, we do it every month, um. And they're fascinating, like, we did, we just saw the plan last week or this week, which I might weeks run together. Yeah, for the plan for the NOBO maker space, which is absolutely brilliant, like, they have a. They, they laid out the uh kind of plan for the first year, cause we're doing a very different thing than what we do here. Cause we didn't get the funding to build out all the stuff that we had talked about with the kitchen, but it's gonna be a flexible space and. Man, they have a really amazing, very exciting plan that everybody's super jacked about, yeah. Okay.
And you reminded me of something I brought up the last meeting, which was um to find a place to post. Originally I was thinking about just posting the, that First Amendment.
No, we're still looking at it.
But I do think we do need to have a place where we're posting our agenda. And posting a meeting notice, because I think just like the city, we need to publicly notice and have that posted in someplace.
It's online on the webpage, so that.
I think we have to physically post it someplace.
Well, no, I think the, the online covers us legally, now I know, and I know you expressed, and I have. I pushed back a little bit, we, we would, we would encourage you to use the digital signage. For promoting things and I don't know that's what you want yet, but I, we are, I do have somebody who's looking out for other signage, we measure, measured the walls, see if we could. Add an additional board there for the trustee wall. If we don't feel comfortable putting it onto the community bulletin board, because that is a policy and one that we had public comment for, that's a. That's a pretty big deal, um, but yeah, it's been, uh, it's, it's a little bit contentious right now with a lot of. Like, there's people posting signs everywhere, it's driving me crazy, everyone, I tried to sign, to staff today, like, like, stop posting up signs. But I, but I do wanna get that for you guys, if that, uh, uh, designer here is. The best solution, uh, and again, I'm, I don't mean to be, I don't wanna be negative about a physical sign, is that if the digital signage would work. Uh, it relatively easy for us to program, I think we're trying to train people to. Look at the digital signage, I see people look at the digital signage, it's not an optimal space, but I. But I, I, I don't know that the community bulletin board or any other place in the library is a good place for signage, it's just, we don't have walls. We don't have a destination, the, the destination we've created is community. Yeah, directly across from us and, and it is heavily used uh. By the community and they go there for information, but it's by and about them, we don't. Well, digital signage is Indian, so there are three digital screens and, and the, you know, that we've used it for a lot of different things, the EDI team has slides there that. Highlight various things around equity, uh, we use it for the program guide, it shows kind of what's going on in terms of library programs. I mean, we used it for eight months on how to keep your parking, pay for parking. Like, I, it may still be running, I.
It's still running.
Yeah, we've been running it for like two years then, like, it's, uh, so some of the things there are informational that. You know, people have asked for, but it, it could be a good place for a freedom to read uh statement.
Yeah.
And I'm happy with, that would be something.
I think we need to post our. Business, something there about our meetings and something there. I think we need to have a regular place where we just are posting our. The business of trustees someplace.
And I am looking, Benita, until, I mean, until it's the directive, if, if, when it's the directive of the board. Of, of finding something, I don't know where it's gonna go, but I'll, I will put it up somewhere, I, but I, at this point. I'm trying to find a, a place that I can come back and say, here's a good option, that then you can all have something to decide on.
Yeah.
But if you say, just make it happen, then I will make it happen. Um, it is, that's definitely your prerogative. Uh, uh, that's a little more.
Okay. Well, if you find a place, what?
We're looking at, Andres is looking, Timmy is the head of public services is looking at.
All right, we'll, we'll put this on the agenda later.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, we got more stuff to cover. Um, trustee matters. Uh, let's set the special meeting for five twenty-eight, so, uh, so move to um. Set a special meeting for May twenty-eighth.
Second.
All in favor?
Everyone?
She says.
She, I abstain.
She abstains, she will not be there. You're gonna have to come. So, uh, all.
Fourteenth and a special meeting on the.
On the twenty-eighth. Any opposed? Oh, is it?
Yes.
Yeah, let's all look at that, okay, all right, we'll set the meeting, we decide we don't need it. We'll cancel. Okay, um, any other, uh, before we do the, then, what, this appreciation for Johnny. Um. Uh, is a, should we get other trustee matters for that, or, I don't know, do you have something we wanna? Okay, who's running that, or? No, I thought David, okay, well.
David is executive session, so.
Okay.
It's a little bit out of sequence here, because we have more work to do after this, I'd be happy to move on to the executive session, so. That's me.
Did anyone, this, this Adam says appreciation for, did you have anything to say?
We do.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to ask you. Okay. I asked you and you said, have that worked out?
Yeah.
So.
This is from staff.
And I, um, I, I used to always say, I can't, I, when trustees and commissioners would be like, I can't believe you, uh. Signed up for a, a five-year commitment, but Johnny has more than doubled that, by a long shot, she actually, uh. Johnny got hit by a car at our first meeting, which was almost eleven years ago to the day, and um.
It was a sign.
It was a sign. Well, I gotta tell you, like, when I, when I first took the job and they told me like the mayor's wife was gonna be on the thing, I was like, there's something on here and I. And I, I talked to some people who like knew people in Boulder and they were like. Yeah, I don't know, it's a really committed bunch of people up there, the Boulderites are different, like, they really bike to meetings and they, they live their principles. And then I got here and I asked, I'd met a few people and I asked around and they were like, oh no, uh. Uh, Johnny has, they are truly independent kind of entities and she has a mind of her own. uh, Johnny had, they are truly independent kind of entities and she hasn't mind her own. Little did I know, I was, I was grateful, uh, you know, to know that she wasn't gonna be speaking for the mayor in my meetings, which is a little bit frightening. It's a municipal library, but, um, I had no idea. And I don't think any of us had any idea how phenomenal Johnny was gonna be. I know at the beginning, some of the staff were like, what's with this lady? Like she's so, like she's writing out notes to us ahead of time. And like, she's like doing all this stuff. And I was like, we just have to be grateful. Like she's telling us. And then I, and then after a few months, it was kinda like, well, she's writing us all these notes, but then she doesn't like push us on it. Like she's saying what she thinks. And, uh, I think it took us all a little while to kind of get Johnny's style. And it's a very unique style. And I don't know, I don't think they make people like anymore. Yeah, I'm, I'm deeply grateful. You have to eat a cupcake. Um, so I don't know if the strawberry torte cake must have been a request. I don't know.
No.
Yeah. So let's, uh.
We have enough.
I, I have said, uh, I, Johnny's gonna stick around and it will be a, I, I've known Johnny now for, and worked with her longer than I've been in, I think all but one relationship. My, my parents and then like one relationship. It's like, it's like, it's pretty, it's pretty phenomenal. I, uh.
Going.
Yeah. It's like, that's a, like, when I sat back and thought about it, I was like, oh my God, I've known Johnny now for, and, and managed to stay friends, right? Like so, and that's what I'm looking forward to the most. I think it's like having you as a friend and a confidant and somebody who's, who's such, such a good person to weigh in with. So thank you, Johnny. Uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, we got enough. We got enough.
Yeah, let's.
And, uh, I wanted to add a few things to what David said, uh, both on my own behalf, but also on behalf of the foundation. So I'm gonna sit here with a cupcake over my head as I say this. Uh, folks that know me, you know, I like to live by the engineer's motto, which is if it can be measured, we must measure it. So I took the liberty of going through my email to try to quantify your last decade of work. It turns out that since I met you in November of twenty eighteen, you have sent me no fewer than eight hundred and thirty emails. Eight hundred and thirty one to be exact. Uh, what was it about tomatoes? So I didn't count it. And I think that just kind of goes to show that, you know, I'd be probably only here tonight because you roped me into getting involved with the district in the first place, right? And to my credit, in case people think I just make bad decisions, you did at the time, promise us that we would be writing thank you notes and having our celebration on your timeline for November of twenty nineteen. So, you know, three years later, we actually do manage to pass the district, I think, through sheer force of your will alone. And I think it is a testament to the fact that everyone is here tonight and you were able to get that done. Um, David alluded to this, but I actually looked up the daily camera article that they wrote when you got appointed to the library commission initially. And I think there is a key part of it we should read here tonight. Which is several council members said Teeter is highly qualified, but they were concerned that Boulder's new library director, David Barnan, might feel constrained by having someone on the commission with such a close connection to council. And I think if only they had known what they were signing up for, they never would have put you there in the first place. But thank you for everything. I think, you know, on behalf of the foundation as well, obviously Doris Hoss was the last, I think, to be the founder of our foundation, was the last major person to push a funding vote for library holder back in nineteen eighty seven, which you highlighted for us during the campaign and when she campaigned for the sales tax at the time. Thirty years later, you come along and hopefully, hopefully for good this time. We have finally solved the sustainable library question. So on behalf of myself, on behalf of the foundation, thank you for everything. Thank you, Johnny Hammer. The big shoes to fill, but if I can do the fraction of what you have done, it will be a success.
Still a shoe, you do.
Yeah.
I know Chris might have had a few things to add as well.
Johnny, wow. Um, you were quoted when they did an article saying, I've been hired in my job. And I was like, who is Johnny Teeter? She's on the speed dial at the daily camera. I gotta get to know her. And, uh, but you've made it, I'm gonna echo, you've made a historically significant contribution to our city. Um, you know, I think you chaired the library machine at some point.
Yeah, I think I chaired it three out of five years, just because of the way that appointments were.
Served on the foundation through that. You chaired the library champions. You chaired the library district. Um, you know, and like Andy Woods, who community activism has always only ever advanced any library anywhere. From getting Carnegie as our first library, on down to Maine and now you, um, led. And, uh, really, when I think of anyone who brought us the Boulder Public Library District, I think of you. Um, you did with persistence, care and a sense of humor. Um, the, the library foundation field that I've come to learn spends a lot of, all of, almost all its energy talking about how to, um, boost the margins really. I mean, at its best point is adding one to five percent to a library's budget in a year. And the field is having a real navel gazing time, uh, about is, is that where the game is? And increasingly the big leaders in the library foundation field are saying, look at what Boulder just did. Look at the tax base. What you want is for the cause you support to, um, not need you as much. Uh, and, and so that's what your leadership has done. Um, and then, uh, there was a, there was a moment of doubt. I mean, you made the difference there. I mean, when, when this was going one way and, um, it looks like it would be a referred measure and, and then suddenly it wasn't. Um, I remember, uh, uh, having a, a moment of doubt myself. I mean, the doubters' voices had gotten into my head. You know, I thought, well, is this, is, is this the right thing? Is this the right time? You know, double tax, whatnot. Uh, and I was lamenting all this out loud with David and he said, oh, if, if they turn this down, Johnny will file a petition the next day. Um, and sure enough, there you were. Uh, and it took a while for the community to maybe catch up. Uh, but in that moment of doubt, you never wavered and you saw this through, and this is generationally significant. I mean, it, um, I, I work with donors on what will their legacy be? Your legacy is secure. Um, and it will manifest in brighter futures for, um, Boulder residents who we will never meet. So thank you for your generationally significant legacy that you have here.
No, thank you all. You made me cry. So it's been, I mean, it's been wonderful. Libraries, libraries have saved my life. And, you know, I signed up for this thinking it was gonna be a nice, pleasant, non-political way to sort of go back to the community while I was retiring. Um, and I had no idea. Um, and it's just been, you know, amazing. I have learned so much and I've gotten to work with so many wonderful people. Uh, I mean, getting to work with David has been great. And for all of you, you know, I, I, I think I got to know David as we had those regular meetings that, you know, vice chair, chair. It seems like I went back and forth between those two positions because we had people who didn't wanna be in an officer position anyway. Um, and it was just, you know, learning about libraries and learning about what they do. Ironically, when I was in high school and we had to take some sort of vocational test, you know, what, what should your career path be? The two things they came up for me were the military and librarian.
Plotically.
So, so, I don't know. But you know, I think they sort of came together. So, yeah, I mean, it's been wonderful. It's, I'm just so happy that it happened. You know, I think all those years working in EPA just sort of put me into the mode of you just keep going. Um, you know, persistence is what it's about. Um, and, and I had no, you know, we had to do it. We just had to, we had to push it. And, and the commission that I was on very early, I remember it was like the second year when we started the master plan and we sat down and said, nothing, none of this is gonna happen unless we do the money. And you had that little, remember your little Jazzy Sam?
Yeah.
Yeah, that we're gonna use with the campaign song?
It's a quote from, uh, Eddie Jefferson. So he's a jazz singer. Romance without finance is a nuisance.
So, yeah. So thank you all. I mean, it's been a wonderful ride and you guys will do great moving it forward. Um, it's just so wonderful to see the library just explode with all this possibility. And yeah, thank you, thank you.
You know, I, when you say that's pers- persistence is a big part of it. But I mean, I think like one of the most premium qualities, characteristics is curiosity. And I, 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 you find it in some people. And if you have curiosity, curiosity with an open mind, like it is a rare trait, probably more rare than empathy than, than all of those things combined. And Johnny, you had it. And you were constantly looking and, and trying to know more. It wasn't, it wasn't simply like, I gotta do this and be persistent and going, driving forward. It was, it was a true open minded curiosity, which I, I mean, it is like the trade of librarians. Like there's a ferret mentality. Like they always are like, you know, kinda looking and looking and looking. But it is, uh, it is so admirable to see in a person in a, in a leadership role and like seeing it live and living in a volunteer. It's astonishing that, so it's, yeah, amazing. What do we got going on here?
I think it's just the vacuum. Oh, all right. Any other kind words from any of, anyone else or words exposed for Johnny? And I, you've been a great mentor to me. I, I appreciate that. And when you and David met to change my mind, I can't believe I'm sitting here. So.
I'm saying that I didn't know, I, I wasn't involved in Alda or in the Cubians or any of that. So I don't have all that history. My experience with you has just been from the day we met at the first meeting of this board trustees. And I, I've been really fortunate in that I always seem to come across really strong, smart women that I have to look up to and learn from. And I've learned a lot from you and just have really enjoyed working with you and I'm really.
Yeah, I'm gonna miss you too, but we promised we'd do like, I'm not going anywhere. It can be hoping. So.
And yeah, for the big shoes to fill, like we can change the shoe. We can, you can wear open toes. That's the way to do it. Like, and there, whenever there's a big shoe policies, like big shoes to fill, you gotta change the shoe policy.
Yeah.
So it's like, open toes.
Well, I think it's Crocs, right?
It's funny. Yeah. It's funny you talk about Matt, cause I've met him a few times and he's always like, well, I didn't, give me a lecture about how he didn't, uh, think the district was the best. But I ended up just like, per fault. What did he say? Get out of here.
No, he was, he was definitely opposed. And at one point I said, you know, you vote against it, you're not married anymore. So, and that was.
Where we have the sanctity of the ballot box.
That's right. But then as the, as the thing went on and as people got, you know, as the sort of misinformation got out there, he got really annoyed.
He sees.
And he ended up voting for it. Yeah. So he did, he did vote for it. So.
Anyone else? Jen?
Yes, I am very far about saying things without crying, as everyone here has witnessed. So Jen, please check your email for my words.
Thank you, Jen. Yes, thank you. Okay. Can we move into the executive session? I mean, enough of this sentimentality.
Um, I think we do have to make a motion.
We do.
So you turn the recording off.
After the motion.
After the motion. So, um. Is it written here? Okay. I, I moved to, uh, I moved the board to move into executive session to discuss personnel matters as allowed by section twenty four six four oh two four F and contract negotiations as allowed by twenty four six four oh two four E and negotiating concerning real estate matters as allowed by section twenty six four oh two four A with regard to the Gunbarrow branch. Uh, the board may enter executive session upon two thirds of the trustees present. Yes. Um, so I moved that. Uh, we've lost all our trustees. Yeah. Benita, second. Okay, they're all back there. We all, and, okay, so moved.
I'm gonna have to bring it upstairs.